Well, I'm making the assumption while I look for agenda. Do you think I have agenda lately?
And so Sean or Catherine, did you feel rushed in that fifteen minutes?
I'm pretty sure if it had gone thirty minutes, I wouldn't have been appointed. So I was actually a fan of the fifteen minutes.
And I actually like the fifteen minutes as well.
I mean, I could go with twenty. Thirty's a lot. I guess thirty's a lot.
Twenty.
So we can start at five thirty? Five thirty. And that would allow time for that procession. Start at five thirty.
And one of you were concerned in what you did tonight. Some of the decisions are not easy up here. You guys made it very hard tonight. Okay?
Yeah.
We'll have another hard decision in two.
And I would say there were several people that came forth today that I would, in fact, we talked specifics around a few of them. But I certainly hope you'll be involved in various commissions and other activities in the city that I think you might even be even more equipped to do. So there was, I thought when we said thirty minutes would be, I didn't realize it was going to take forty minutes. And that's attributed to the very difficult decision it was amongst eleven candidates to come up with even four. Two weeks from now it'll be even harder. But I would encourage those who did not make the final cut to stay involved and to find a position. Talk with the mayor. There are open positions on some of the commissions right now. So I would encourage people to do that.
All right. And all of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye. opposed? Motion straight. All right, with that, we'll move on to the consent agenda.
With the invitation to the candidates, I mean, please don't feel compelled to put around the rest of the council.
Oh, yeah, true.
We won't think you're not interested in city government if you leave.
Right.
All right, all items listed below will be enacted by one motion. Actually, I am to include minutes for the September eleventh, two thousand seventeen murder of city councilmen. Approval of warrants they stated in the agenda packet. Other approvals include Agenda Bill seventeen one three seven authorize a call for bids for the multi-year sewer, stormwater, backdoor maintenance project where the city's small works lost. Agenda Bill seventeen one three eight authorize a call for bids for the community park trail, southeast Ridge Street and southeast Chris Drive project. Agenda Bill seventeen one three nine authorize a call for bids for the water reservoirs improvement project and Agenda Bill seventeen one four three approve the emergency services consulting international fire department strategic plan proposal. Do I have a motion, Helen?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as stated as any discussion. I haven't seen no discussion from the councils or any member of the public that would like to comment on any dissent prior to action. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. We move on to ordinance. It's Parks and Public Works Committee, Agenda Bill seventeen one two five, Resolution fourteen zero six, adopting the utility section of the city's Sequoia twenty seventeen to two thousand twenty-two capital improvement plan. Again, this was introduced on that eleven minutes ready for action tonight. The summary statement was read in at the last meeting, so it disregards the motion.
Move to approve Resolution one four zero six, adopting the utility section of the city's Sequoia twenty seventeen to twenty twenty-two capital improvement plan. May I have a second?
Second.
I have motion and a second to approve Resolution fourteen zero six, stated by Councilor Hallway. Any discussion, councilman? Drew, go ahead with your presentation.
There really is no presentation tonight. Basically, I just wanted to offer a few comments for you guys. If you look into the past, we've actually vetted these projects on multiple occasions. And not only have we vetted them recently at the Parks and Public Works Committee, but we've also vetted them during the utility rate setting back in February of this year, as well as prior to that during the formulation of our utility comprehensive plans. In addition to that, the Affidate Committee in the past has reviewed the projections related to those projects, discussed financial options related to financing those projects, and also looked into the sustainability of the plan that we have put forward. Currently, as we stand, as I stand here before you today, what's most important in this plan is probably pages five and six. It's good to have a nice understanding of pages five and six. It's the most comprehensive table in this document and tells you pretty much all that you need to know. What you will notice from pages five and six of this table is that the plan is financially sustainable. You know that because we are not running a deficit over this six-year period. It is solvent. It will maintain our solvency here at the city's Sequoia. In terms of revenues, revenues are forecasted higher than our anticipated expenditures over this six-year period. Another point to offer in addition to financial sustainability is this does not obligate the city of Sequoia to spend money on projects. It doesn't authorize the issuance of bonds, nor does it authorize spending on, like I've said, projects. Just to look forward a little bit towards the future, this plan is not a finality, but a checkpoint. It's one of many checkpoints that we're going to go through in time to implement these projects. Not only are you going to have a chance to vote on spending, project spending, but you're also going to have the opportunity to vote next year on the CIP plan again. So this is truly a living document. It doesn't lock us in for six years, and I think that's critical to note. And thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I would recommend approval of this plan.
I want you to hang on for a second. Case the council has any questions for you? Any discussion or questions for the state council? Thank you, Drew. Are there any members of the public that would like to comment on this item prior to action? You know the drill, isn't it?
Yes, I do. Leslie Shepherds, seven five one six, in the area of Avenue Southeast. I've been looking a lot at the CIP past, present, as well as the corresponding sewer documents. And I guess I just have a couple of questions here. My numbers are perhaps a little different than yours, but going through the CIP, I felt it wasn't very clear on what exactly is future development versus maintenance. So I put everything into an Excel spreadsheet, and it looks like I have approximately thirty million going towards future development. And the questions I would want to know, both as a resident or if I were sitting on the council, is what exactly is the breakdown for future development, expanding into the Salish, the mill site, and the sewer and engineering plan mentions the Snell Hill West? I want to know the exact breakdown. What's future? What is maintenance? And if it is future, I want to know exactly what is going to be reimbursed on that by the developers. The second question I have is when the gentleman who came before me said that this is a solvent plan, I'm a little confused by that, and I would love some clarification because from the finance meetings, I have that eighty-three percent of it is going to be debt. So I'm not sure, maybe I'm just not understanding the terms. When I think solvent, I think that there will be no debt issued. The money the city makes will be paying a hundred percent. We will never have to take out any debt or any bonds. So if I could have that and the residents could have that clarification, that would be fantastic. And the third thing is, I know that for my calculations, which again, I think the CIP could use a little more detail. I was looking at CIPs from other cities to see what kind of detail they put in. I see about twenty million is going to be going towards downtown infrastructure, so sidewalks, sewer pipes, drain runoff, all that stuff. And that's great, but you know, that's a lot of money for a small space. Does that have an effect on the downtown residents? Will there be a levy or anything placed on them if they have their properties improved with sidewalks? Like, these are things that if I was living downtown, and currently not, I would want to know, how did this impact me? So before I could approve in good conscience anything, I would want some of these questions answered. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Is there anybody else that would like to comment on this item prior to action?
Thank you, Shepherd, six seven one one, last Crestview Loop, Southeast. Okay, so the twenty seventeen, twenty twenty-two utilities capital improvement plan, CIP, will cost the city over seventy-one million dollars, which is a portion of the total CIP. In the next few months, another piece of the CIP, the non-utility CIP, which includes fleet facilities, parks, transportation, and information technology will be coming. From page five, the city's plans to issue forty-five million, seven hundred and ninety-nine thousand, five hundred and forty-six dollars in new debt. However, based on the payment schedules on pages thirteen, sixteen, nineteen for sewer, stormwater, water respectively, were the principal amounts of twenty-eight million, four hundred and thirty-seven thousand, five hundred and twenty-eight dollars plus seven million, one hundred and ninety-two thousand, nine hundred and sixty-four dollars, seventeen million, eight hundred and two thousand, two hundred and fifty-nine dollars respectively, which equals a total of fifty-three million, four hundred and thirty-two thousand, seven hundred and fifty-one dollars. I've been reminded that the CIP is not the actual issuance of debt, but a plan that can change. It has been said that this plan may be overstated. Looking back at previous CIPs, two thousand six to two thousand eleven, two thousand seven to two thousand fourteen, and two thousand eight to two thousand thirteen, comparing the plan for two thousand nine from these three CIPs for utilities, in two thousand six, the plan for spend in two thousand nine was two million, in two thousand seven, two thousand nine plan was two million, in two thousand eight, the plan jumped to ten million for two thousand nine. Based on this history, it is unlikely that the CIP plan will reduce. I have surveyed several other cities, asking what's the largest bond debt that they have ever taken on at one time? Responses from Renton, Redmond, and North Bend think have not. So in February twenty-seven, the city adopted utility rates and fees increase based on the model of what is expected to collect in order to sustain this debt. So I'm really concerned about how we are looking at this. We're not looking at this from the top down as far as ability to support it financially. According to the MRSC, they have a guideline to do that and compare yourselves as far as debt ratios to other jurisdictions. I'd like to see the city do that. So I'm disappointed with the city's response when I asked for another comparable city with our population to see if they've ever taken on this much debt, to see if they did that successfully. I'd like to see that comparison. Thank you.
Thank you, Shepherd. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak? Ms. Martin?
Thank you, council. As you know, I've been canvassing a lot with my city council campaign, and a lot of residents are very concerned about our city being heavily funded with bond debt. I have a simple question. Will this be affecting the property taxes for residents? How are we planning to pay this off? It would be wonderful. Drew did a great job, you know, estimating this is a great plan. It will pay for itself. We're not going to have city debt in the coming years. It would be great if we can get a breakdown of what that is. And of course, as Leslie mentioned, as a resident, I would like to know how much of the approximate fifty-five million dollar bond debt we're talking about here is going to be going toward infrastructure expansion to the Salish and to the mill site? Are we paying as residents for sewer and water lines to be taken to these developments? Or are these developments going to be paying for this on their own, which is what residents really want? And there have been a lot of questions about this that I've received from the community. So I'm hoping that before this is passed, maybe we can be a little bit more transparent with some of these issues and at least answer the question of if our property taxes will be going up. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Is there anybody else who'd like to comment on this item prior to action? Anyone else in the board, council? Any further discussion?
Yes, let's do this now. Nicholas, can you come up?
Are you here?
So there seems to be still some confusion around some of the data that you presented a couple of weeks ago. So maybe you can walk us through again the breakdown of capacity.
Or just saying, you know?
Yeah. Capacity versus maintenance, which is about fifty point four eight percent. But I'll let you do it because you're the CFO.
Sure.
Can you also address the solvency issue? I'm not a finance guy, so I can see why going to debt might not seem solvent. So it's a very good point that was raised.
And the difference between the revenue on, as we're talking about here, general obligation?
Yeah. And I may have to call up our city attorney to, again, as has been explained before, compare why the MRSC, that gets cleared a lot in this meeting, why comparing to other cities is recommended in general obligation debt, but not the debt we're talking about now. And if that's a comment for you, by the way, I acknowledge that. Maybe you could jump into the finances again and share it with us, so we're all clear of those requirements.
Well, I'm very, I'm very excited with the question. I might have distracted, but also distinction between property taxes, general fund.
Look, just clear that off the table. This is utility, the utility and utility capital improvement plan has absolutely nothing to do with real estate taxes.
Or property taxes. You don't cross those buckets.
Sidewalks are another thing. If you could clarify, sidewalks are not part of it, but it's... So if you can clarify, because it's my understanding utilities go sidewalk to sidewalk.
It's not curvy, curvy, as we call it. So basically, you can only repair anything that's above or in your ass that's underground. You can tear up the street with a new pipe in. You can repair the street curb to curb, but you can't go out and improve it further.
Because normally, the street surface, the curves, the sidewalks would have to come on a general fund revenues, not utility revenues. But if you're digging up a street for the purposes of fixing or repairing or replacing utilities, utilities can pay for the street reconstruction.
That's correct.
Otherwise, those two buckets of monies by state laws, they're in two very segregated funds and do not cross or one affect the other.
Yes, we were going to talk about that on October fourth in our citizens academy, all of the many funds our government gets offered.
So can you jump in on the agenda for clarity? Can you clarify the capacity versus maintenance?
Yes, council, I'm sorry, I'm calling out. So these are a series of questions that we've been asked or answered over the last few weeks. This one in particular, capacity of projects, as we explain them, account for forty-nine point one five percent of the fifty-five million rounded total in the utilities capital plan, and about twenty, so about forty-nine point one five percent equals a rounded number of about twenty-seven million dollars.
So capacity would be analogous to growth?
Well, it could be. I mean, in some cases, you may have just a quarter inch pipe in the ground. Standards say that that pipe should be bigger than quarter inch, so we're going to be putting in a bigger pipe into the ground. In some cases, it will increase the actual capacity for conveying adhesions and other things back into the plan, but not in all cases. We just call it capacity in those cases.
Okay. And so when the Salish builds their conference center, whatever they're going to call it, across the, just down the road, who's going to pay for all the piping and all the infrastructure underneath that site?
It's my understanding that the developer will be providing the site-based infrastructure and not, you know, to connect to our treatment system. I believe we're paying a general facility charge.
And what is that facility charge? Twenty thousand per ERU?
I think it's twenty-five per ERU, which if we can remind folks what ERUs are, it's equivalent residential unit.
Right. So it's a measurement of capacity or quantity in the water arena. It's looking for, and here, Dr.
Yeah, the tot.
Two. Top.
Water ERU quantity, off the top of your head.
Yeah. For the two twenty, five, two forty.
Come on, you don't like to...
Don't take my notes. For the record, Todd Saxburg, operations manager, utility, water, wastewater and stormwater. ERUs usually calculated about a hundred million gallons per day. On the Salish and the mill site together, we're talking one thousand eight ERUs, three oh eight for one, and seven hundred for the other developer paying, by my calculation from the ordinance, which is available on the website, around twenty-five million dollars for one thousand eight ERUs.
So they'll be paying twenty-five million dollars, those two developers combined?
Yes.
Twenty-five million dollars, and that eats into the fifty-five million dollars, right?
Yes, effectively, that is a utility revenue. It can only be used to pay for utility capital investments. So we can go back and look at, like we do every couple of years, or in this case, four, what are the future rates going to be based on this new revenue that's inside of the system? So if we collect those charges, future rate payers may pay less, they may pay the same, or at least one thing's for sure is we will have a declining rate of increase in the rate system.
So developers will pay for a hundred percent of whatever they do on site, and they will pay a connection fee for, to connect to the system, correct?
Yes, as is stated in the ordinance.
For their share of improvements, the equal.
Essentially, they're helping, yeah, they're basically contributing back toward the capacity projects that are listed out in the document.
You could say that's development paying for development.
Exactly, or capacity paid for capacity. And just so that everyone's clear, the existing development agreement with the Salish expansion, with the Muckleshoot Tribe for the Salish expansion already requires them to pay GFCs and other applicable connection charges at the time. So that's an existing legal requirement beyond the code. When the mill site project comes forward, the finding commission, then the council will have the opportunity to impose conditions on any approvals granted. The previous mixed-use plans that the council approved for the ridge contained multiple and detailed requirements for payments for municipal facilities, for connection charges for water sewers, so on. That same opportunity will be presented to the council for the mill site. So if there's any question of where will that happen, that will be the time. And again, that would be layered on top of what the code, the existing code for ridge already ordered.
Okay. So the money that we're talking about spending, it's approximately twenty-seven, twenty-eight million dollars on the capacity? Am I right on that?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven million dollars rounded on the capacity piece. That is factoring in buildout for future projects, including Salish and the mill pump.
It's a portion of it, yeah. I mean, effectively, we're looking at the six-year window. And so any of the projects that we can complete within that six years, that will then further...
But we have not deducted from that total what we think we're going to get.
Correct.
And so those would go to pay down or offset that twenty-seven million dollars. So in other words, it's very possible we will never have to pay or bond against twenty-seven million dollars because we've had revenue coming in from developers that are hooking up to the system.
So right now, the plan doesn't include the general facilities charges. So certainly, as future iterations of this plan, council asks with questions such as, how do we pay for this now that we're at this juncture? We'll take those issues up at this time. So because we haven't included general facilities charges as a revenue, we are looking towards debt or bonds to pay for the infrastructure improvements. When those GFCs become realized and take them in as revenue, it will reduce our need for debt at that time.
Is a reason to pay, to take out debt versus paying cash? I've had it explained to me that by using straight cash, you put the burden on the immediate population rather than debt, spreading it out across those who live here now and who will live here in the future. Is that a fair assessment of why debt might make sense to spread out the cost across the population, present and future?
It is, yes. It's a generational equity question. Some of the same reasons we don't all go run out and buy our houses cash is because, you know, it's an affordability issue as well. So what the debt helps us do is help smooth out our rates so that rate payers aren't getting shocked right up front for paying for capital improvement, you know, capital improvement projects that in fact would actually cost us more if they didn't get taken care of in a lot of cases. That's the other half. We're not spending dollars, twenty-eight million dollars for the maintenance project. So what we're doing here is allowing future residents to help pay into a rate system and pay back those bond proceeds so that we don't just raise rates to astronomical in the near term, just to maintain the plan.
Well, Nicholas, you made a point that I think the greater compelling need is that there flat out isn't enough cash to pay for all the need. And so it's an issue of deferred maintenance. So it means you pick and choose the three projects you're going to do, and which fifteen you're going to neglect, and those fifteen that go into a state of disrepair then start costing you five or four or five times more to repair several years down the road. I mean, I overused the analogy of kind of like the leak in your roof. You can fix it when you first found it for three hundred dollars, or you can wait four or five years until it turns into a three thousand dollar problem. And that's precisely how the city infrastructure behaves as well. It's no different. You pay care of it, or you neglect it, and you pay it through the nose. In fact, that's precisely what we're trying to overcome. It's not a pair of apples or oranges comparison of the communities. Just a few other communities have a significant... Colleen well knows this town for a multitude of reasons with the, not the least of which was the decline of the economic engine of this valley when the timber industry was waning and had lost that economic engine, that this town went into a long period of decline and could not take care of the infrastructure. And we're still trying to overcome that. In fact, that's what's exciting about all of this, was we can finally get to a point where we're coming and rebuilding that infrastructure. But I can assure you, we're rebuilding it at a considerably higher cost than if it had been maintained properly from the get-go.
Well, I think it's important to also talk about, we like to give you the facilities that we... Sorry? Thank you. Thank you. I will start over. It's important also to talk about the fact that the facilities, some of the facilities that we put in before the homes on the ridge went in are now twenty, twenty-five foot years old, so they're also coming up on the similar maintenance cycle.
Yeah, we're confronted with, do we want to do the things like it was done in the past where we left that, I always call it the sleeping giant waking up with the ridge infrastructure now coming as to its first maintenance cycles? And if we don't get on top of that, we get into the same predicament where it's tens of millions of dollars of falling behind and really doing an injustice to this community. The, or Sean, if I could add real quick, about six, seven years ago, we did an exercise because there's often this sort of us then with infrastructure downtown or on the ridge, where why is the downtown paying for the ridge and so forth? So we just, as an exercise, segregated those pieces and said, let's have the downtown pay for the downtown and the ridge pay for the ridge, and let's assume it's for cash. Downtown, what our estimates were, that we would have, in order to rebuild that rotting infrastructure and so forth, we would have had to increase utility rates by three hundred dollars per month versus if we spread it across citywide, it was twenty-five dollars per month. So it's, and leveraging with some bonding as well. You do this, you premise the infrastructure, and the length of the bond does not exceed the length of the life of the project, and you can just keep that in a good flow, keep responsibly, keep on top of our infrastructure. But this is the first time in the city's history where we're finally turning the corner on getting all of the infrastructure, including this or downtown, into a proactive state of maintenance. That is a phenomenal position to be in compared to most communities. Have we heard comparisons to North Bend, others? If you're going to impair the prices to North Bend, please compare it to the state of the infrastructure too. Go drive around the streets all through North Bend, and you come back and tell me how we look compared to North Bend.
Did they have a house or still? They built it still?
How?
Where the utility overflowed and went into the house, which the city had bought, but never tomorrow.
So I think during one of the interviews, I think it was Jim Mayhew's interview, he said one of the things that the city can do better, I think, is take a step back and say why. So I think this is the need today, is to take a step back and say why. So I appreciate the historical perspective on that. And thank you, Jim, for bringing that to our attention, because I agree with him in that. Last question I had for you directly, can you explain how solvency and debt exist in the same sentence?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's pretty straightforward. If you look at it from a personal perspective, as an analogy, you might say, you know, the minute you take out a mortgage, you don't become insolvent. A bank wouldn't lend to you if you were going to become insolvent after your mortgage was lent. So this is very similar in this case. The plan was designed with this debt in mind, so we had to have revenues in place to cover that debt, or we would have never been able to plan for it effectively. It wouldn't have been looked at well by outside rating agencies, in which case they looked at this with eyes wide open, and they looked at a double level increase for the city for its revenue debt.
Or could you explain what you meant by double of a, double of a...
Yeah, we had a chart up here before, and I don't think we have it right now, but essentially the city went from a position of, they tried to say this right, yeah, A minus, no, excuse me, A to a double A minus.
To put that layman's terms, it went from higher risk to lower risk.
Right.
Investments for the investor gambling on whether they get their, you know, this is a good investment.
Right, it put us into an investment rate quality pool that we weren't in prior. And that was, that rating was done in the beginning of this year, actually, at the same time we developed the rate structure and with the whole display of this capital plan of the S and P standard port rate company, which is a fairly well-known rating in the city. So the plan is solvent. It is an enterprise fund. It doesn't co-lege with general taxes. It doesn't affect your property tax, sales tax, et cetera. And so it has to stand on its own, and it has to be visible so that it can be financially stable and sustainable, separate from other city operations. And it is, so.
And I guess another why issue is, you know, why, if I can phrase the Salish expansion, for example, which I think it's important to understand that that's not one where you can say, oh, should we make this investment? Maybe we shouldn't prepare for the expansion of the Salish. And that was a legal entitlement given going back to Fuzzy's term in office, as you know. And there were good reasons why the city needed to do it then in order to diversify our revenue. And there was one question I should, actually, can't be, or the councilor of Crewt pointed out one nuance when we talked about these buckets of property taxes versus utilities. You can do curb to curb if you're replacing or fixing utilities because the... You can do curb to curb, if you're, if you're replacing or fixing utilities, because the, the curbs are considered part of the storm drainage system. But beyond that, you can't. So sidewalks have been a real challenge and dilemma for us. One estimate was in order to replace all the sidewalks downtown, it would cost us eight million dollars. We did kind of a volume engineering and said, hey, let's see, let's try to keep every square foot of sidewalk downtown we can that we think is in acceptable shape and do, and at best, we cut that number in half. It's, the four million dollars is still a big heavy lift against the general fund. So the challenge is, where do we get the revenue? Do we raise property taxes? Do we continue to raise utility rates, rates further than they have been? Or do we diversify revenues, invest in things like the Salish Lodge, which that investment in the utilities comes back a hundred percent? And what comes in addition to that is significant revenues in excess of a half million dollars a year from the operations at, at the Salish Lodge that doesn't come out of property taxes, but comes from economic diversification actually to the point of the white, as Jim had said.
That's the only question I have for you. My last question on this matter was for Bob Sterbank. Um, the MRSC is something that's quoted, uh, often in this, in this setting and in other settings. Can you explain why, um, there was some reference given, I believe it was Peggy, that suggested that we should be comparing ourselves to other cities when we're talking about utility debt? Can you explain that's, that's not what the MRSC says and clarify?
Sure. Well, the, the MRSC, um, comes from a, a webpage that they have on debt management policies. And when they're talking about using debt ratios to compare yourself to another city, and, and when they use that term, they, they explain, they're talking about the ratio of your existing bonded, general bonded indebtedness to your maximum legal statutory indebtedness rate, that ratio, and then comparing that to other cities. Utility, um, revenue bonds are not subject to a statutory debt limit. And so you couldn't come up with that kind of debt ratio. So when MRSC is talking about debt ratio comparison, they're talking about general obligation debt, which is debt that's funded by general tax revenues, property tax and sales tax. They're not talking about utility revenue bond debt only, which is what this CIP is talking about. Um, and the other point to be made about MRSC, we talked to Nicholas about the issue of cash versus debt. There's a very, uh, detailed paper on the MRSC site explaining this concept of a generational equity and how a city can best use debt to spread the cost over a lifetime of repairs rather than penalizing existing payers with a cash policy. So I think I made that available to council. It's certainly out there on the MRSC page for anyone who would like to see it or if you want a copy, I'd be happy to forward. Uh, one last piece to touch on, some other things you talked to Mr. Lee about, of the question of the, the essentially forty-nine to fifty-one split on the capacity projects versus maintenance. The reason for doing, having to make that judge.